Stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Arms, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start out with the amendments. Has everybody had a chance to review the amendments from our last meeting or so is their motion received as presented?
So moved. Second.
The second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. The next item is item three, the consent agenda. All items with asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted not by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the council of remember or send a request in which is event of the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there any items that anyone would like to have to be removed? I have one, item seven E to be removed. Is the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented with the exception of seven E?
So moved. Second.
Second. Okay, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. At this time, before we get into our public hearings, I'm going to have item six A, Dave Harmon from DLCC, you please come forward and give a presentation for us.
Well, thanks. Every year I come in and give kind of an annual report on the DLCC summer rec programs. And it's kind of nice to go first because I think I got all happy news for everybody. So I did hand out a handout. As you can see, our numbers, our summer rec programs are minor league baseball, major league baseball, little league baseball, girls softball, tennis, and then we run a very unique program over at the rec building. When you look down these numbers, you can see they're pretty high numbers. And the good thing about what's happened the last two years is that everything bounced back the same or even better numbers than we've had in the past. They've been doing this for 10 years in the city of DL, and these are just fantastic numbers. Compared to some of the other programs that we have and that are going on right now and are coming up, our numbers continue to grow. And I always have to give praise to the right people, and in this case, it's the parents in the city of DL. We have a wonderful group of parents that get their kids involved, get them out, and have them play and have fun. So that makes my job a little easier. We also have, I think the last couple of years too, it's good to say that with what happened, that we seem to have a high number of volunteers. Parents want to be more involved, and that's moms and dads. So another good thing for me and for the city. I know other cities that I talk to, they do not have the luxury of this parent involvement. So that's really awesome, too. There's some other little summer programs that we also run for three and four-year-olds. We run a Happy Bat program where we had 25 to 30 kids. We run a T-ball program that has always close to 100 kids. And the reason I bring these up, because these are great feeder programs for the rec programs, and they're all run out at Snappy Park. I always give you numbers about participation, and I thought I'd mix it up a little bit different this year. If you take all the kids that participate and all the adults that come watch the kids play, in one week out at Snappy Park, where we have games on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday night, and we also have adult softball, that's approximately 17, 100 people come to Snappy Park weekly. That number right there is just astonishing. When you think that we have 10 weeks of games out there, you can do the math, and that is really amazing. We do have some adult programs that we run, men's softball, women's softball, coed softball. Men and coed is very strong, but in the whole state and actually the Midwest, softball is on a decline, and our women's softball is actually on a decline. And the main reason being is the younger generation just did not play slow pitch softball. When you come out and watch them play, you'll see it'll be an age group of 35-plus. It used to be 20, 30 years ago, there would be two or three teams that were 25 years and younger. We just do not have that anymore. That's the difference between the men's and the coed. They have a lot younger participation. The other thing I always like to say is that Snappy Park is just a wonderful facility. And kudos to the city, the public works, our parks and rec department, administration. I really work well with them, side by side. So this is not just a DLCC program, this is a city and DLCC, and it's just been a marvelous relationship. And then the other thing I want to bring up is that if you ever drive by the new pickleball courts, you can tell from eight o'clock until 12 o'clock, boy, those carts are really busy and flying, and it's just a great recreational for all ages, and that continues to grow. The schools are starting to bring kids over there and doing PE classes and everything. So it's just great. I have nothing but good things to say about the summer programs right now. They're growing, great participation with kids and parents. Any questions?
Do you have any questions for Dave? If not, Dave, thank you very much for the great job that you do for the city of Detroit Lakes. We appreciate all your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's an honor.
At this time, we're going to go to item seven B. I'm going to have Greta from the library to please come forward and give us an update of what she has going on over there at the library. And we're going to have a consideration for approving the architect proposal for a library improvement, but before we go into that, we're going to have Greta just tell us what she's got planned for us.
Certainly. So this is a proposal from BHH Architects, and our community needs assessment, which was done this past year, resoundingly, the number one priority was to do something about the public bathrooms, to renovate the public bathrooms. This would entail updating them to ADA compliant, so that they are ADA compliant, and then also updating the lighting, updating the fixtures, just bringing them, they were built in 1989, and so they just need an overall update, but then also the issue of ADA compliance is of utmost importance. So this would be the first step in moving towards renovating the public bathrooms. I also, there is a potential donor towards this project, so hopefully if we are able to move this forward, this is a project that we can see through to fruition, and then I think we'll have a celebration and the public library visitors, and I think a lot of people would be very excited about this. I've been the library director for about two years and seven months, and no joke, within the first month of taking over, this was the number one thing that I heard, the public bathrooms. Which, yeah, okay. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but that is the proposal I am asking you to consider.
Any questions for Greta? If not, Greta, you've got a great library going there, you've got a great staff, and we appreciate all that you do for us, and I know you've got a working community needs program going to come up with ideas for us, and we appreciate you coming here and letting us know what those ideas are, but most of all, we appreciate all the work that you do for our library. You've made a big difference for us.
Well, thank you.
At this time, I'm going to call on Natalie.
So the finance committee discussed this and moves to make the consideration to approving the architect proposal for the library improvements.
We have a motion, there are seconds.
Second.
There is a second. Any discussion on this?
Any actual dollar amount looks like 5,900.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, like she said, we have a possible, looked like a real good donor coming forward on this, so we're very fortunate for that, too. And if there are any questions, we'll all take a vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Okay, now.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Greta, for coming. Now, we're going to go back to our regular agenda, and we're going to go ahead and we're going to adjourn our regular meeting for a public hearing, and we're going to start out with four A, a public hearing to receive public comments on a proposed street utility improvements for Westlake Drive, County State Highway six to the Pelican River. John, would you like to give us an update on that?
Certainly. Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. Before I start, just so I can gauge the audience a little bit, who's here for this particular hearing? Quite a few, if I imagine. Okay, good turnout. So we're going to go through a bunch of material for a lot of you folks. A lot of this will just be repeat from previous meetings we've had, maybe some updates and new information as well, so I will try to cover it all again. Public hearing for Westlake Drive, County Road six to the Pelican River. Oh, yeah? That helps. I think you told me to do that, didn't you? There we go. So overview and purpose, again, this is for the proposed street utility reconstruction to Westlake Drive between the Pelican River and County Road six. Why? A number of reasons. Gain input, provide information, answer questions from the public or from the council. And that's also a requirement of Minnesota's statute 429, because we'll be using some special assessments to fund a portion of the project. So I'll go over the existing conditions and the project need. We'll touch on what the proposed improvements are going to consist of or what we're looking at right now. Estimated costs, funding, special assessments, which is, of course, what a lot of people are interested in. And then we'll talk a little bit about the schedule and have time for questions and comments following the presentation. So again, here's the project location between the river and County Road six on Westlake Drive. Background, this actually goes back a fair distance. I think it goes back more than five years, but formally, about five years ago, there was a number of folks along there that ultimately requested that the city start examining ways to improve, really at that point, the sanitary sewer, and that's where that started in about 2017. We actually started looking at trail options as far back as 2009, so this thing has a little bit of history to it. We held a number of public input meetings, more informal type meetings, 17, 18. At that time, we kind of came out that there was some interest in doing more than just the sewer, rip the Band-Aid off, if you will, and get all the improvements done that need to be done. We did an additional meeting in August where we talked a little bit more specifically about the trail alignment. So we've visited on this for a number of years. Over that time, this project scope has grown, again, starting with the sanitary sewer. Then we added in, you know, a full reconstruction of the street rather than just replacing half of the street for the sewer. Street reconstruction necessitates us to do stormwater collection and treatment in accordance with current regulations, and then we also have added the water main reconstruction as well. We'll touch on that in a little bit. So this is also a joint project with Becker County. They're the road authority for the project. Recent, a couple of other recent developments. The county received a grant from SHIP to further study some of the trail alignment options. That's what we covered at the August meeting. We got basically two options for that, the east side or the lake side of the roadway, or the west or railroad side of the project. Also, the city received $150,000 grant, I think that was this spring, from the DNR to go for a portion of the trail construction costs. So existing conditions, there is no conventional gravity sewer in this area, and what I mean by conventional is typically a sewer system within a municipality consists of a gravity main, and the homes flow to that via gravity, and then goes to a lift station after that where it continues on down the line. That's not what exists here. The existing sewer, if you will, is a six-inch PVC force main, so you have a pressurized pipe that's sort of quasi-serving as the sewer collection. It was installed in the late 70s. Really, the primary purpose of that main that's out there is to convey the discharge from upstream lift stations at Shorewood Drive, Weefest area, River Hills, et cetera. So that's carrying and pumping that affluent into the city, getting it towards the wastewater treatment plant. So some speculation is that this was never designed for this, but very, very small lots, they probably had septic systems on them at one point, and you can quickly run out of space for septics on those sized lots. So again, some speculation that as those failed, the next best option was, well, let's just pump into the force main, which can be done, but has its challenges, which most of you have probably experienced or a good portion of you. You know, and when there were seasonal cabins, it was probably a little bit easier. As times gone on, those have become more full-time homes. So that's sort of the evolution of this. So the properties right now pump sewage into the force main, and basically you have a septic tank with a pump, pumps into there. There's a check valve that's supposed to keep the stuff in the force main, in the force main. Therein lies the issue, those check valves fail, and the stuff that's supposed to stay inside the force main ends up in yards and things like that. So I won't dive into that any further. So those are all private systems, but we've had a number of backups over the years. It's kind of like clockwork, at least two or three a year, I would say, over the course of time. So water main, there's an existing six-inch water main installed in the 70s when that force main was installed. Really, I can't say that it's in poor condition, it's a PVC water main, but it's a different type of material than what's currently used, so it's not up to date, if you will. Then more recently, the Public Utilities Commission did a water distribution master plan, and one of the things that fell out of that study was the need to upsize this water main going around that side of the lake. It is one of two water mains really going to the south side of the lake. The one around the other side is a good-sized main, but this one is quite a bit too small to do what it needs to be doing. Street, right now, it's a 44-foot wide rural section, plus or minus, no curb and gutter. It was originally graded or constructed back when it was a min dot roadway, Highway 59, best we can tell, about 1950. Then there's been typical rehab and maintenance since then. I updated this and did send it to Kerry. I think it was in 50-something, the surface was added, and then it was overlaid in 70-something, and then overlaid and widened to its current width, I believe in 2000 or 90-something. So it's, point being, you're going back to the 50s of when that was originally graded, and since then, it's basically been overlaid and sort of maintained. I wouldn't say it's the worst road in town, but it certainly has its deficiencies. It's starting to show its age a little bit. There's some cracking. Again, I wouldn't say it's awful, but with the other improvements, obviously, that's going to have to be removed in order to, just to facilitate those improvements. Stormwater, there is no storm sewer collection or treatment system right now. Basically, drainage is just provided by a ditch system on the west side of the roadway. There's really nothing on the east side to speak of. There's some nuisance ponding that happens occasionally. Again, I can't point to that and say that it's necessarily a huge issue, but there is no formal drainage system to either convey or treat the stormwater through the segment. So proposed improvements, sanitary sewer, again, through a course of meetings, there were different options were presented. The one that fell out was basically to install what I would call a conventional gravity collection system. So we'll put a gravity main in through this area. It will all flow to a common point somewhere in the middle of the segment, go into a small lift station. That lift station will either pump back into the existing force main, or we'll run another force main down to where the adjacent gravity system ends, which is just on the other side of County Road six. So one of those two options, but in either case, you'll have the ability to discharge to a gravity system without pushing against any sort of pressure. This is just a picture, but obviously, a little tough to see. Water main, what we're proposing there is a 12-inch water main that we would replace through the whole project section. We would remove the existing water main that's there. We don't need two things doing the same thing. It's two things to maintain over time. So we would remove that, put a new 12-inch main, put new service laterals in, new hydrants, new valves, et cetera. The existing main is 45 years old, so while I can't say again that it's specifically deficient, it's 45 years old. So it would be, I don't think it would be wise, was the logic, to go put street improvements over the top of a 45-year-old water main. We'd hate to be back there in 10 years ripping up the street just to replace a water main that we didn't do. Service laterals, typically what we do on these reconstruction projects is the city extends the service laterals from the sewer or the water main out to the edge of the property, the edge of the right of way, and we stop. We put a curb stop in, or we put a clean out on and connect to what's there. There is a thought, and we haven't really vetted this out yet, I've mentioned this before, that it would make a lot of sense to sort of complete the job on the property owner's side of things, meaning get rid of your pumps, go that extra 10 feet to get rid of the tanks and the pumps and make that connection. A, doing it under one large project should afford some savings. Biggest thing is then each property owner isn't looking to have to bring a contractor in to de-water this thing. We'll have the whole site de-watered for the rest of it. It makes sense to take advantage of that. And so we could either go down the path of telling everybody, okay, here's your month window, you coordinate it, or we do it. Or potentially, it could be a combination. If folks want to do that on their own and we state the window that you have to do that, we could go down that road, or we could just take it under contract. There's some details that would have to be worked out from a legal perspective, I think, for us to do that. We would need some temporary easements and agreements, but I think it makes some sense. So that's something that yet to be flushed out. It'd require a little bit more work on our end, because every one of those situations is going to be a little bit different. So more to come. Street, right now, what we're looking at is something that's 30 to 32 feet wide, urban section, curb and gutter. Very similar to the other portion of Westlake Drive to the north that we're also planning to do next year. It is substantially narrower than the existing road. We're basically giving up most of those shoulders. Right now, it's, again, 44 feet wide. We would be looking at shifting the alignment to the west, particularly at the north end of the project. As you go south, it starts to come back onto its existing alignment a little bit more. That'll improve the separation from the homes and additional length of driveways. Right now, everybody's aware that that proximity or that road is very, very close to a lot of the homes, particularly down by County Road six. We are looking at doing on-street parking on one side of the road. Right now, we're recommending the west side of the road simply because we don't have issues with Cars Park where there's driveway approaches and things like that. If we try to go to the other side, you're actually going to limit how much parking capacity you're going to have just by, purely by the number of driveway openings. So the west side seems to make some sense. Stormwater, we will have to put in a small storm sewer system, so essentially runoff will go to the curb and gutter, into some inlets, into a storm sewer. That storm sewer will discharge probably to the west side of the road, either to a small basin that we would have to construct, or to some swales in the ditch, things of that nature. But we do have to treat to current regulations when we're reconstructing this road to meet both watershed and city requirements. Well, the east trail, we're looking at a 10-foot wide concrete surface, a five-foot turf or colored and stamped concrete boulevard. I don't know that we've nailed that down. I think personally, if we can get away with a five-foot turf boulevard, that'd probably be nice. The concrete makes it feel a little bit different, and with five feet, I feel reasonably comfortable that we'll get some turf to grow. That can be a challenge, is getting turf to grow on those boulevards, but at five feet, I think we can do it. And again, we can place that trail on either the west side or the east side. There are absolutely pros and cons to both. You can make a good argument for both options. You know, on the eastern alignment, certainly this is from my perspective, but we've spent a lot of time looking at this. You know, the pros to an eastern alignment, we're not crossing Westlake Drive at County Road six, and obviously, that's a big one. It's pretty similar to the existing situation with pedestrians using the shoulder, at least on that side. It's a better connection at the Dutton Locks Trail. There's better continuity and user experience for people using the trail, meaning the trail's going to be on that east side from six to Legion, so it can kind of just keep on going. That's an important factor. It's also better for any sort of future trail extension, while we have nothing planned formally. Someday, it is certainly possible that the trail keeps going around the lake, and if we go to that west side, you'd ultimately be crossing back once you get to Long Bridge Road. So keeping it on this side potentially avoids another crossing in the future. Longer driveways, more separation between the street and the homes under this option. Cons, obviously, the big con is crossing all the driveways. It's a lot. And then just the proximity of the trails to the homes. I mean, that is understandable, if we live along there, that there would be some desire or preference to have it on the other side, simply to have that over on the other side of the road. So not much to look at here. I probably could have left these out. Looking at the western alignment, the obvious pro, there's basically one driveway to cross and some other unused approaches, I would say. And then proximity to homes. It puts it on the other side for most of the folks out there. Cons, the big one, crossing Westlake Drive. It's a larger safety risk, and when I say that, we evaluated this, this risk of both are not great. You're crossing a lot of driveways or you're crossing a busy roadway. But just simply put, statistically speaking, there's much more opportunity for a vehicle and pedestrian interaction when you're crossing Westlake Drive, purely by volume. So that's how we've kind of landed on that. Not to mention the driveways also are at a lower speed. So you bundle all that together, this, you know, this becomes a larger risk. Potentially, we would need to add stop control to facilitate that crossing. Bikes and pets might still continue to use the shoulder. If they just say, eh, I'm not stopping, there's folks that run that don't like to stop to cross the road, so they'll just keep on going, and that sort of defeats the purpose. We need a permitted easement at County Road six from that property owner. We'd also need additional temporary easement from private property and railroad under that scenario. So quite simply, the recommendation from city and county staff is to, I have that wrong. Eastern alignment is recommended. Wow. Let me be clear. Eastern alignment is the recommendation from the city and county staff on this. And again, the primary reasons are the functionality, the safety, and then future considerations. So that's where we've landed. Construction challenges and impacts, we'll get into this as we move closer to the project. There's a lot of items that I don't have good answers for at this point. We will detour the through traffic, so we won't have all the traffic trying to come through a construction zone. We will try to have local access to the degree we absolutely can. We'll spend a lot of time trying to figure out, stage the project such that it keeps that access open to the degree we can, but it will be challenging at times. On the other segment of Westlake Drive, we're looking at doing half the roadway at a time and using that other unoccupied half to get cars in and out, meaning the folks that live along there. So we may end up doing something similar to that. There'll be a lot of communication leading up to the construction and during through, you know, progress meetings or more input meetings if needed. Email blasts and newsletters are commonly stuff that we do during construction in addition to just interaction face-to-face. City will put stuff on their website, things like that. One thing I do want to point out, as we get further into the design, we may need some temporary easements from properties in order to facilitate this design in, so we can make sure we tie driveways back into the new roadway properly. If we don't have enough space to do that, it can result in abrupt changes, so we might need to go back on your driveway five feet or something and replace it out. So more to come. Schedule, assuming the council and the county move ahead with this, we do the final design this winter, moving towards a bidding sometime in the spring of '22 with an assessment hearing also next spring, awarding a construction contract sometime in that April or May timeframe, and then moving into construction next year. So right now, I think there's a hope or a goal, and I can't commit to this, that we would actually bid this segment of Westlake Drive and the other segment of Westlake Drive at the same time, like same day, with a bit of a hope that we get the same contractor to do both. That would help with the coordination between the two and make life just a little bit easier. So we'll have to see how that plays out. So estimated project costs, and I got to emphasize they're estimated yet. We're still working off of, you know, fairly simplistic drawings. As we get closer and closer, we'll keep refining these, but in the end, we're looking at a project with all the proposed improvements and some contingency and professional services and things like that of about 2.7, almost 2.8 million dollars. I will tell you, too, this presentation will be on the city's website, so if anybody's trying to feverishly write down numbers, it'll be posted on the city's website. So how is it get paid for, funding and cost distribution? Basically, we've got the city Basically, we've got the city contributing to the project with utility funds and some food and beverage tax proceeds. The county will be using some state aid funds and possibly some of their sales tax. We did get that grant that I mentioned from the DNR to the tune of $150,000, and then the balance would be special assessments to the adjacent properties. So, the county's participation is pretty straightforward. They'll pay 100% of costs related to the street reconstruction and the storm sewer. Remaining costs are basically the city and/or assessable, meaning the city will pick up all of some of them, some will be split. We do that in accordance with the city's assessment policy. So, this is something that's applied uniformly across all projects that we do that are like this, so you're not treated necessarily any different. What that says is sewer and water is assessed at 75% of a standard cost. So, a standard water main is an 8-inch main. And if you heard me before, we're going to put a 12-inch main in. So, what that means is we're only going to assess on the basis of this 8-inch main. Anything over that, the city pays through the utility funding. A standard sewer is an 8-inch main. That's what we'll be putting in. Again, the city assumes that remaining 25%, oversizing, looping, and non-assessable areas, and that would like, for example, include the western side of the road for the water main. There's no developable property over there. So, they're effectively picking up half of that water main cost right out of the gate and then taking 25% of the remaining. Service laterals are 100% assessed. Lift station is 100% assessed to the ultimate service area, and then the city pays 100% of the costs related to the trail with the grant and the food and beverage tax. So, that's a long way of saying what's shown on the screen here. When you break this all down, the county would be looking at about $1.3 million or 48% of the project cost. The city'd be looking at about $700,000 or $715,000 at about 26%. And then, the balance going to property owners at $731,000, which again, is about 26%. And that gets us to the $2.8 million price tag. So, now, we talk about how we allocate that assessable amount that was in that previous table. How does that get spread out amongst the adjacent properties? Again, we go back to the assessment policy that tells us the practices for that. Basically, we look at how much assessable footage is out there, divide that assessable cost by the footage, or the number, the cost of the service laterals, divided by the number of service laterals to come up with a rate. Sewer and water assessed on a front-footage basis, so footage is typically the width of your lot, provided that that lot isn't wildly irregular in shape. If it is, we'll look at an average sort of dimension, but all of these are fairly regular. And then, that determines the cost per foot. Service laterals are done on each basis. Lift station is done on an area basis, so we look at the ultimate service area of this lift station. What can it service? How many acres? And come up with a cost per acre and come up with a rate that'll be so many dollars per acre based on the size of your parcel. So, this is where it all lands. The estimated special assessments for sanitary sewer would be looking at about $46 a foot. Sanitary sewer services are about $2,300 each. Water main is about $44 a foot. Water service at about $3,500 each. And then, the lift station is about $26,000 an acre. So, obviously, I can't run on the screen each and everybody's individual situation. There's some typicals up here. If you had a 40-foot lot, which there are a number of 40-foot lots in there, about a tenth of an acre, you'd be looking at an assessment of about $12,000. 50-foot lot, .15 acres, a little bit more at $14,200. And there are some 100-foot lots at about a quarter of an acre. You're just a little bit below $23,000. So, that's kind of how it shakes out. Obviously, there's exceptions. I'm just trying to paint the picture of most out there. If you have a question specifically on your parcel, you can contact me. I do have them estimated out for every parcel. Just give me a call, and I can share that number with you. Terms and conditions. Again, that hearing would be next spring, spring of '22, probably around the April timeframe. Assessments would be levied against the benefiting properties starting in '23. So, it would go on your taxes starting in '23. Typically, these types of projects, they're applied to property taxes for a 20-year term. The interest rate, we won't know until we get there, but it's kind of ranged between 4% and 5% generally, as of lately. You have the option to pay all or a portion of that special assessment in advance, just like a loan, and ultimately reduce your interest charges. So, with that, I'm going to turn it back to the vice mayor, and what we typically like to do is separate these two questions and comments. So, if you have questions, you can come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and once we get through all the questions, then we'll take comments that can be directed right to the city council.
Okay. Thanks, John, for that update and report for that. But like John said, at this time, now's the time for you to have questions and comments, and we'll start out with questions. And if you can, please come to the podium, give us your name and your address. Try not to repeat. Other people that get, keep hearing the same thing over and over again, but if you have good questions and new questions, please bring those up for us. So, we'll start with questions. This time, if you have questions, please come to the podium. Give us your name and address.
Just grab one quick, easy one for you, John. Brad Wimmer, 1225 Westlake Drive, and then a couple of four rentals in the area. Speed limit. I think that's one of the big, big concerns for neighbors is hopefully the narrowing of the road would lower the speed limit maybe to 15 miles an hour. No, I don't know. But I think that's a big hope, so address speed limit.
Sorry. Thank you for bringing that up, Brad. I did forget to incorporate that. We have talked, I mean, ultimately, I need to clarify this, that it's the county's decision being the county road, but the discussion with the county at this point has been to look at reducing the speed limit through there. Right now, it's basically 40 through that area. At least, maybe knocking that down to 35. Whether we go all the way to 30, I think there's some uncertainty. So, think 30 to 35 right now has been the discussion. But to your point, the reality of it is, we can sign at whatever we want, and that typically has very minimal impact. What will have the impact is actually narrowing the road, putting the curb and gutter in. Study after study has demonstrated that that's far more effective than signing. So, I do think you're going to see a pretty dramatic reduction in speed through there, because right now, no curb and gutter, very wide road. That's human nature. Just go fast. And narrowing that up, maybe tightening up the lanes a little bit, I think that'll bring people down.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the group from that area that have a question? Please come forward at this time. Any other questions?
Jeff Phillips, 1158 Westlake Drive would be the west side from County Road 6, south about 190 feet. So, with your calculations there, if I wanted to enter the city and have the privilege of using water and sewer for my property, it'd probably be $50,000.
I can tell you that in just a brief second. Jeff?
For your property that's across the street, which I need to address, I forgot, because you're not in the city limits.
Correct.
That portion, anyway. Yeah, the estimated would be about $48,000.
Okay. But yet, you might want to purchase some of my property for the privileges of running a bike path or...
Potentially, yeah. Under the scenario that's being recommended with keeping the trail on the east side, we would not need to purchase anything.
Okay.
Under that scenario. Under the other scenario, yeah, we would need a sliver permanent easement.
What's a sliver in Lakes area?
Probably 5, 5 feet.
By?
Couldn't tell you. 5 by probably 100.
That's a pretty big sliver. It's bigger than my lot on the east side.
Fair enough.
Good. Just wanted to bring that up.
If I can, Vice Mayor, I want to follow up. I did some updates, and I forgot to send them to Carrie. There are a couple of properties on the west side of the road in the section, just south of County Road 6. They're not in the city limits, so those properties would not receive a special assessment right now. It'd be a postponed special assessment. If they were ever to come into the city, then we would levy those special assessments at that time.
Thank you, John. Okay, any other questions? Any other questions? If not, then we'll go to comments. If you have a comment on this project, would you please come forward, give us your name and address? Any comment on this project?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and the city council members. My name is Julie Moore. My husband and I own the property on 118 line Westlake Drive. I just want to state from the beginning, we have supported this project from day one. We were actually one of the first ones, I believe, that brought it to the attention of the city back in 2017 at the very first Westlake Drive meeting, which didn't even involve our section.
Right.
We desperately need the sewer improvements, the water improvements, and we really support the multi-use path. However, where our breakdown happens is which side of the road to place it on. Creating the multi-use path sends a clear message to the public. This is the designated path for walking, jogging, rollerblading, et cetera, bicycling, which implies it's safer than the other options. How could a path on the east side possibly be safer when it will still cross the same 24 driveways, two of which are business use, and four are used by the large condo timeshare property, Breezy Shores? There's not a lot of traffic on our shoulder today because of this. In answer to this question, the recommendation from the city is barrier-style curbing with a 3- to 5-foot median, effectively blocking property owners from accessing their own property with limited access for one vehicle on most properties. Currently, today, most of us can get three or four vehicles parked on our property. Reducing the homeowners' access to the property does nothing to address the two business-use driveways nor the four condo timeshare driveways at Breezy Shores that will still continue to cross the multi-use path, which have considerably more traffic at all hours than our individual homes. The concession to blocking the access to our property offered to homeowners is limited parking on the west side of the road of Westlake Drive, which currently has one and another to a shed driveway, and the rest is empty space along the railroad tracks. A point made many times at the August 24 meeting is the road in question. Westlake Drive is too dangerous, we were told, and busy for a multi-use path to cross, even when property owners brought up suggestions regarding possible crosswalk markings on the street, signage, and the use of lights. We were told these efforts would not prevent the possibility of just one careless, reckless individual disobeying the law and causing an accident. This is true. In the state of Minnesota, most drivers know, as of September 1st, 2020, failure to obey a crosswalk with or without lights, even if the crosswalk is not marked on the street and is simply a sidewalk to sidewalk connecting a visual line. Failure to honor a pedestrian, bicycle, rollerblader crossing the road there is a misdemeanor, punishable by up to 90 days in jail, $700 fine, or both. Also worth noting, heavily-used areas in Minnesota that are used, can use a longer-than-standard illumination of walk or don't walk lights displayed, and the source of this information is the Office of Revisory Statutes, the Minnesota Safety Council. We were told that even with all these items in place, it is still too dangerous to even consider putting the path on the east side of the road. However, the city is recommending that we, our loved ones, our friends, our children of all ages, my twin 18-month-old grandsons, will be carried across the road with luggage, baggage, at all times of the day, and it's still, no lights, no signage to stop traffic when we park by the shoulder. We'll be randomly crossing this same dangerous road every time we go to use our property. Property owners, their loved ones and friends will cross this road in the winter. We have a lot, we're primarily year-round usage right now. There's a couple cabins that are seasonal. The rentals are year-round. There's traffic at our homes, cars at our homes, year-round. We'll be walking across this road on 6:00 PM on Christmas Eve. We celebrate Christmas with our grandchildren and children and parents. We'll be carrying groceries, luggage, toddlers. In the summer, coolers and gear with zero lights, zero signage, and zero marked crosswalk across the same road that we were told is too dangerous for all of these signs, lights, and crosswalk markings to even help. In closing, our greatest concern is not selfish. It is not that we do not want the path near our property. We want it to be safe for every single person that uses it, including us and our grandchildren and our parents. The east side concerns, in summary, safety for those using the multi-use path. Number one, the east side, it still crosses the same 24 residential business and condo driveways that it crosses today. It is still in proximity behind our vehicles, only now endorsing it as the official multi-use trail will assuredly increase the usage. Additional concern for ourselves and loved ones crossing the road year-round without the benefit of any safety measure to stop traffic. The liability of the designated path crossing near our vehicles if someone were, to heaven forbid, get hurt. The liability is transferred completely to the homeowners. The lack of access to the property for home repair. We haven't even talked about this. Tree trimming, removal, and shore maintenance. We are required to maintain our properties. Contractors will find it very difficult to help us maintain our properties without being able to bring a trailer with materials or supplies, replacing shingles. We'll have a very difficult time, we already do, finding contractors that are willing to work with us, and it is always at a premium, and this will only make that worse. The west side benefits. The multi-use path crosses two driveways and can be connected to the current Dutton Locks Trail. Signage, lights, marked crosswalk can be added for safety, and laws will apply to those who do not obey. The west side concerns. Someone may disobey the traffic laws, the signage, the lights, the crosswalk markings. This is a risk at every single crosswalk and intersection in the country, and a lot of those intersections have a lot more traffic than Westlake Drive. We ask that you please consider these issues that we bring to your attention as you make your decision. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I have a copy of this for you that has signatures of homeowners that support this statement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and make comments for this project? Is there anyone else? Now, it's time to come forward.
Brad Wimmer again. And again, we, we're at 1225. We've got, with rentals, we've got 300 and roughly 335 feet on the property. And, you know, I'm in agreement with John and the city, and I think our renters are and our homeowners are. I think you've addressed the safety issues. Many of the concerns that were brought up, we're facing those today. I mean, again, I don't want to go over every point, but service people use our driveways. They use our parking. The parking across the street would be a bonus to what we're getting today. You know, we don't have that now. So, I think some of those things, I appreciate how the city has gone methodically through this. I'm concerned, again, for the bikers, the walkers, of which we do all of the above, crossing the intersections. And I think the idea that we're going to have more traffic with biking, with all of the above, is a boon to the city. I mean, I just smiled when Dave gave his report tonight. You know, I was ecstatic, and I think that's what Detroit Lakes wants to bring to the community. I mean, I think, and I think the more of that we have, the lower the traffic speed is going to be, and I think the more concerned we are. You know, I have to look out my driveway five, six times a day when I leave my driveway. I have to back out with caution, and I will have to back out with caution when this new road system goes in. So, regardless of which side it's on, I'm going to have to back out with caution, as we do today. So, you know, I think you've put a lot of thought into it. We're just extremely anxious, and I think most everybody agrees we need to do something. We're just extremely anxious, and I think most everybody agrees we need to do something, so we're ecstatic about getting these improvements in. The bike trail, I think, will do a lot of good things. I think the curb and gutter will bring a lot of good things. I think it will slow down traffic. I think it'll bring us more into a neighborhood like South Shore, like many of the other areas of the lake. I think we've been missing that, and I think if we can keep a consistent traffic, and I agree with John, I think this skinning up of the road will be a vast improvement for us. So I think people will not zip around the corners and come across the lake like they do in many areas, and I don't know how else you do it. Like I say, you could put a 15 mile an hour speed limit, and they're still going to go 40, 45 if we're as wide as we are. But I think bringing the activity in is going to be a boon. I don't think it'll double. I think it'll add. We're excited about having a bike trail, a walking trail around the lake. I mean, this is an amenity that most lakes do not have. You'd go around any of the lakes neighboring, whether it's Sally, Melissa, Pelican, don't have this jewel that Detroit Lakes has the opportunity to have. So again, our properties and the lake shore that we have, we're excited for the project coming up, so we appreciate what you've done.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? I saw another man back there, stand up. Okay, please come forward.
Hey, Chase at 1177 West Lake Drive. And about parking across the street, I have a driveway directly across the street from me, and then there is also a driveway, Jeff's driveway, where that's going to not give us a parking spot if we have the one spot across the street. And another thing with lake pets, I have a couple dogs. A lot of other people have dogs, loading dogs and stuff across the street. That's not going to be okay. Something's going to happen. Someone's going to lose one. But a lot of stuff, I agree, but I'm for the walking path on the west side. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Can I ask a question?
Please come forward. We'll get back to you. Just some comments right now.
Well, the comment I have is that, you know, and we have eight grandchildren, and we have two families. So you're forcing them to be on the other side of the road. No, if I understand it right, we will have one for our own car on the east side, right? Or not?
Can you say that again, Russ?
Well, in front of our house, if we wanted to be on the east side, we've been parking all this time. We have never parked on the other side because, well, some cars are going 60 miles an hour through there, and they're not paying attention to the, and it's not being regulated whatsoever. So, and now I'm going to take my two families that have those kids, and they're going to be carrying their luggage across the road with that road. We all know what it's like. It's horrible. So the question is, is that are you going to take care of it and slow it down to at least 20 miles an hour, 25 miles an hour? You're going to have kids running back and forth. It's not only getting there, but now they've got to get something out of the car, back and forth, back and forth, and we know what it's all about. So take a picture of your own house and say, every time you had to get something, you had to go across the road, and it's going to go, and they're going 60 or 30, 60, whatever they want to out there. It's not even being regulated. So that's a big risk to us, and we've been there since early 80s. We've been on that place. So it's not like we haven't been there before, and I just don't understand why you want to do it on one side, but when we're going to back out, even the one stall you have, we might be running over somebody. Someone will have to be out there making sure that there aren't any bikes coming across, so we go across it, and then that's another thing. So both sides, we have both risks, so it doesn't seem like that's quite fair. And that's all I have to say.
What's your address, please?
1185 and 1169. We have two of them, and we've had them since the early 80s.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just remember, I have those seven kids.
We have two. Yes, almost three.
Hi, my name's Brianna Wolf. I'm Chase Ropetz's girlfriend. We are at 1177 West Lake Drive. Russ and Nancy are on one side, and on the other, we're in the middle, and then Troy and them are on the other side. So as Chase had mentioned, there's a driveway straight behind, and then Jeff's other property is to the north and on the west side. So if there's a property that we get, or not a property, but a parking spot that's given on the other side, is it designated or it's just a free-for-all?
It's public parking, just like on any other roadway.
Okay, so we have 33 feet of property. His truck's about 30, 30 feet long. It's a Ford, it's a Ford King Ranch, it's big. He has trailers all the time. So where do I, as a property owner with him, park?
Sure. Let me, since we're in the question, or the comment period.
I was going to say.
I'm going to direct it to the council here, but I want to clear the air because I think there seems to be some misconception. The proposed alignment on the east side of the roadway council is pulling that roadway west in a fashion that even with the trail on the west, or on the east side of the road, the back edge of that trail is still further west than the edge of the existing street pavement. So what that means, another way to say it, everybody's driveway, at least in that northern half, up to about Brad Wimmer's house, about there, it starts to come back, but everybody between there and 6, their driveways are getting longer than what they are now, and there currently is no parking on the shoulders. It's all posted by the county as no parking. So while I understand what they're saying, there's not an intention to take away parking. We will try to maintain those driveway spaces within reason, and there actually should be more space than there is right now.
So you're saying if somebody comes, John, they would be able to park their car and unload like they're talking about with suitcases and so forth?
Yep.
Company and so forth?
Yep.
Then they could park on the west.
What about their truck being 30 feet long? Yeah, I'd have to look to be certain, and I can certainly do that. I don't have the information with me, but I could look at your specific property to find out, okay, what's the difference?
A comment after that. So if we're looking at, let's say it goes on our side, and we have to use that other side, and we have one, two, three, four, five properties, plus there's another, that tall one on the other side of Jeff's, that would have to go on that other side to park a second vehicle?
No, I mean, here's my, I drive through there to my house every day, too, and there's no parking on the roadway right now.
Right. And we're all in here.
Yep.
So if you're only letting one car come in.
Nowhere did we say we're only going to let one car come in. We can have double-wide driveways.
Okay.
Yep.
I think the question's coming into the map that was used at the previous meeting shows yellow symbols for the size we assume when people's parking areas.
No.
So.
Those are driveways, and they're just, at this point?
So where will the curb be?
Let me finish.
The lawn driveway.
Let me finish, Julie. The driveways, right now, we're at like 10,000 feet. We show driveway locations. Are they of the right width? Not necessarily. We've got to go out, we've got to survey, we've got to get all that stuff figured out. My point being, if you currently pull into your property and you could park two cars side by side, for example, we will continue to do that. Now, are we going to allow a free-for-all, meaning 10 cars wide? Most of the properties aren't that wide, but you get my gist. If there's, if you have a double-wide, because that's pretty common, or crumb, you go to any subdivision, driveways are about two stalls wide, generally. We wouldn't have any objection to creating double-wide. And again, I have to hit this home, the back of the trail will be further west than the edge of the existing pavement, so I really don't think there's this impact to parking that's sort of being assumed, and I mean that genuinely.
Is this a double parking behind each other, then, or back of our vehicles even closer to the driveway?
Property by property, to have to look at that. There are some properties that, yeah, I think you could get two smaller vehicles back-to-back. My point is, you all park there right now. Right now. Nobody parks on the, on the street, and we're not changing that. It's actually getting better. We're moving the road away.
We're not confident when you say a double-wide opening. Currently, we can get four to five vehicles in front of our house. Nobody parks on the other side of the road. It's the width of our house. We have a 40-foot lot, and in 40 feet, depending on vehicles, we can get three trucks, we can get two trucks and two small cars.
And we still might be able, we still might be able to do that with a narrower driveway opening, say a double-wide driveway opening, where you can go straight ahead or pull around. I mean, there are a lot of, there's a lot of garages in the city.
But all of this sounds dangerous compared to just putting it on the other side.
I'm not going to get into it.
I think at this time, unless there's something new to bring up, because we're hearing a lot of repeats now, I think we'll go ahead and close the public hearing part, and we'll go back to the city council, and I'll call on Madeline Sukie to make the resolution.
The Public Works Committee has been over and over and over this, and we are in favor of moving to accept the resolution authorizing the improvements and ordering the preparation of plans and specifications for the street and utility improvements for West Lake Drive.
Okay, and there's a motion, so then is there a second?
Second.
There's a session. Now we'll go into discussion. Is there any discussion on this now amongst the council members?
Vice Mayor, I have questions first for John, but then I'd like to speak my comments as well. Mr. Pratt, looking at this, and you said the road width would be going down to 35 feet?
30 to 32 is what we're thinking right now.
And that's very similar to what it would be north of Highway 6, then, correct?
Correct.
So that road width of 30 to 32, how does that compare to McKinley or Roosevelt avenues?
Significantly narrower.
So it is narrower than those two roads, even?
Yep. Generally speaking, McKinley, Roosevelt, those, Roosevelt's a little different, but a lot of the roads that you see, two lanes of traffic with parking on both sides, Washington Avenue, for example, those are 44-foot wide roads.
Okay. So this would be even narrower than that?
Yes.
Okay? Therefore, what we've seen, in your experience, and what we've seen around town, by taking roads that are massively open, like West Lake Drive is now, and kind of bottlenecking that intentionally, I mean, we've seen speeds reduced just because of comfort of driving, correct?
That's been studied over and over and over in the industry, as far as the most effective way to control speed is actually giving roads a diet.
Okay.
I should clarify, 30 to 32 feet where we don't have on-street parking, where we're trying to have some on-street parking on that west side, on the north end, obviously the streets can be closer to 40, 40, 40-ish in that area.
All right, thank you. Next question for police chief is, can you think of an instance where, obviously, we want pedestrians safe to be at the utmost and foremost? Can you think of an instance where these people are talking about bringing coolers, grandkids, presents, Easter bunny cakes, everything else across the road? Would these people be allowed in a considerable amount of time to put their hazards on and park and unload, and then enter their vehicle again and park on the other side of the road? Can you ever think of an instance where we would issue citations for that?
No.
Okay. And I'm assuming that would be related to your officers to please respect the loading and unloading zone in appropriate amount of time? Okay. Head nod yes, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have for questions. Can I go into comments?
Go ahead with the comments.
Okay. I work at lake shirts. I do T-shirt math, so my math is not great, but I look at this and go, even if there's 24 driveways and people are going on average five times in and out a day, you add in four driveways for the commercial being the bowling alley and the Breezy Shores, that gets me up to 320 potential crossings, where now I'm struggling, if we put this on the west side of the road, we're asking people to cross traffic twice on a 5,000 traffic road. So we're asking them to cross 10,000 times compared to 320. I struggle with that. I realize change is tough. Change is difficult, but change isn't always bad. And the reason I say this, I drive this every day myself. I live within a mile of that, this area. I see this as being a lot of benefits to this area of town, not only the trail, but also the slower speeds and narrowing it down. The road, to Mr. Pratt's point, is moving to the west. That's a benefit right there, whether the driveways are going to be too wide, three deep, whatever, that's yet to be figured out. You know, curb and gutter to help the lake and the environment and keep some of that stormwater collection that we currently don't have. I feel that this is, the east side is the right place to go. I really do. That's my two cents, so that's where I stand.
Are there any other comments or questions from council members?
I guess my one question slash comment, those of you that are talking about, like, when your family comes, the people that have come up and talked about it, when they come and they park, so they can just go right into your house, are they parked on your driveway or are they parked on the lawn?
That's the kind of the point. We do not have driveways. We have, per the Pelican River Watershed District and City, when we rebuilt our house in 2016, crushed rock, a specific kind of rock, bordering our entire property line, continues into the neighbor's property line, and so on. There is no curb. We were hoping for a drive-over curb for that space so that we do not have to park across the road.
And I think that's part of the problem, is that you all are used to being able to park on your lawns, and.
It's not a lawn.
Or, you know, but when you have, when you have people come, they can drive, they can drive onto that, but with putting in regular curb and gutter, is that even going to be possible?
Yeah, you know, Vice Mayor and Council, I think to the point of this concern, I guess what I want to try to convey is, I will make a valiant attempt to go and look and talk with Julie and some of the neighbors, and what can we do? Okay? Maybe we have to, yeah, generally, as a rule of thumb, we don't want to promote really, really, really wide driveways, right? I mean, we don't. We have ordinances that specify certain widths. Is there an extenuating circumstance where we try to meet in the middle a little bit? Again, let's say the driveway, driveway, lawn, whatever it is, I mean, they could park all the way across the property, it's 50 feet wide right now, and maybe we can get that down to some, something where you could still come in and go like this, and this, and this, and like that, and reach some sort of consensus where it makes some sense. So I'm not lost on hope that we'll find something that's going to work. We're just, I don't want to sound like I'm dismissing your comments, Julie. We just got to get there, and.
We just have very decent property.
They are.
Yeah.
Agreed, agreed. And so I think, while I won't guarantee that nothing's going to change, I think there's things we can do to, probably, I think there's this picture of, I'm going to get one driveway opening for one car, and that's it, and that's not what we're going to do, and if we need to do something more than that, I think we can work through that. So that's sort of my comment back to the council, I guess.
Well, and that's kind of what I wanted you to point out, that there is ways, we're grounded, because, I mean, I drive by there, too, in the summertime, and I see cars and how you're, how you're trying to park closer and that kind of thing, and we don't want to eliminate that or make that dangerous for you either, but we're looking at the overall picture as well, so.
I wanted to say, too, that this council and many councils before us over the years have tried to help your area because of those small lots, and in most parts of town, what we've done there would never be allowed, and we've done what we could, so you could have your lake homes there because they are small. But at the same time, in a situation like this, though, it kind of comes back and bites us because we helped to give you what you wanted, because on some of those where you're right up on the road, you know, we've tried our best to help you all along on this, but it's just all that property that you have down there, and some of you have smaller property than others, so it does make it very difficult. Is there any other questions or comments from council people?
Two more that I forgot, I'm sorry.
Okay.
One, I think it's probably the council wishes to maximize parking on the west side if we can. You know, I know you're very cognizant of that, and I think adding parking there would be in everybody's best interest, so please take that into consideration. Two, people's concerns about backing out. I completely understand that, and we got a ton of sidewalks, miles of it in town, that people do this every day. So I don't think it's anything different than on Summit Avenue, than on Roosevelt, anywhere else that there's high-traffic areas. I think about where Vice Mayor Zeman lives out on, north of 34, on Roosevelt there. You know, you got people backing out in high-traffic areas that are speeding that still have to be cautious. So I think that is, is we're not trying to pass the buck and push that on anybody, but I think that's, we ask other people in DL to do that as well.
Okay, Dan?
Well, kind of a question, comment, maybe more for maybe the city engineer and/or the council here. I know that there's, the speed issue came up all the time, and, you know, trying to calm that down. Is there other ways that we could do, maybe flashing lights to say, you know, draw people's attention just to the, you know, more caution? lights to say, you know, draw people's attention just to, to the, you know, more caution and whether, and we like flashlights at roundabouts, but should we put some flashlights to stop people down at this section just to say, hey, caution, pedestrians crossing, just to further?
Radar signs have been studied and kind of shown to have some pretty good effect at getting people's attention as you're, you know, if you're cruising in from, oh, the rural area, it can be a good reminder when that blinks at you and you're 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. So I mean, there's things like that that we could consider to help mitigate that and get people to slow down in addition to just the road diet.
Yeah, so just if we can consider some of those things that as we, if the county or whoever does the speed study doesn't get on board with reducing the speeds enough and we need to do a few more calming techniques, I think we should look at the calming techniques to get that, to get into people's heads that it's, it is, should be slow and we should be paying attention to any crossings going on.
Any other comments or questions from council members?
I'm going to ask one. Would we be better off eliminating the across-the-street parking and just moving the whole road that much farther over?
The challenge is, we can't move the road that far over because I still have to get back on alignment across County Road 6. So I can't move the road on the north side of County Road 6 any further. We have a hard driveway there with a steep bank.
Yep.
So I can't move that any further. So, meaning I can't get over on the other side any further.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, I think we'll go ahead and call the question, the consideration of resolution authorizing the improvements and ordering the preparation of plans and specifications for the street and utility improvements for Westlake Drive, Highway, or County Road 6, State 8 Road to Pelican River. This time we'll take the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries. Thanks all you for coming tonight, too. Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn our regular meeting for another public hearing. We'll let the group get out of here.
What if I have to go to the bathroom? Hey, my presentation was shorter than the question and comment period.
Okay. Next item is for public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed assessments for street stormwater, sanitary sewer, and water main improvements for Lake Forest 8th Edition and 270th Avenue. John, I'll call on you again for comments on that.
Vice Mayor and Council, buckle up. This is going to be light speed compared to the last one. There's nobody here for this, but we still need to go through the motions. Assessment hearing for Lake Forest 8th Edition and portion of 270th Avenue. We're required to do this under state statute. I'll go through the improvements, costs, financing, and questions and comments if you have any. A little bit background on it, this, the developer, Marty Solomon, petitioned the city for the street utility improvements. This represents the final portion of the Lake Forest subdivision. It's about 14 acres of property, 22 lots, single-family and twin homes. Basically, we put in water main on 270th and within the subdivision. The same with sanitary sewer. We had to extend that from Salt Shore Drive. We're out of grade in the development, so we had to run a new main in there. There's a pretty picture of it. Stormwater, we had to install stormwater on all the new streets. We had to do treatment and rake control. It was generally provided by an existing regional basin within the subdivision, but we also had to install a new infiltration area on the south end of Salt Shore Park to deal with the runoff from 270th Avenue. New streets were typical, 36-foot-wide urban section within the subdivision. The north end of 270th, we reconstructed as an urban section, 41 feet wide. And then there's also a new connection into the subdivision from 270th Avenue in the southwest corner there. Estimated costs, the final project costs, I should qualify this, we're substantially complete on the project, so I'm projecting these final costs, about $1,274,000 all-in. Financing funded by city and special assessments in accordance with our policy. Sanitary sewer and water main, 100% of the costs are assessed. City pays for any oversizing or looping services, 100% assessed. Stormwater, for a new service area like this, is split 50/50 with the development and the city. The street, 100% of the costs. 270th, we view it as a reconstruction, so per policy, that's a 50/50 split. Lighting, 100% city share. Property that is adjacent to 270th Avenue on the west side of 270th Avenue. The east side is the park, that's us, we're going to have to pay for that. The west side is property that's outside of the city limits currently, so we'll, we'll assume the stuff on the east side along the park. The under, on the other side, that'll be a postponed assessment and those assessments will be levied if and when that property ever comes in. So the way this all shakes out, all said and done, the city's share on this one is significantly higher than a typical subdivision because of our ownership in Salt Shore Park on 270th. So we have about $300,000 into this. We've got about $163,000 in postponed assessments that we would hopefully collect at some point in the future. And then assessments to the Lake Forest subdivision of 800,000, bringing us to the 1.2 million. Allocation is basically a per-lot allocation for the Lake Forest assessments. We have two assessment rolls in this case, Lake Forest is per-lot, and then a front-footage allocation for those properties adjacent to 270th Avenue. So this is what the cake looks like when it's baked for Lake Forest. All said and done, you're looking at single-family lots of about $35,000, twin-home lots of 39,000. That does not include $56,000 of previously deferred special assessments back from the lake project in the mid-'90s. That $56,000 is being captured in these assessments. It's just spread as a bottom-line adder, so we will collect all of that in addition to what is shown there. 270th Avenue, these are postponed. Again, here's the rates per foot and per each. So those lots actually would be coming in at about $27,000, which compared to most of our special assessments, that's pretty rosy. Assessment terms for Lake Forest, which is Roll A, developer prepaid 25% of that assessable cost that I just went over before we started construction, so he's prepaid that 25% of the remaining balance plus any of those previously deferred costs that I talked about. It's assessed for 15 years following a five-year deferral that'll start in January. Interest rate will be 4%. Roll B, outside, those are postponed. We'll levy them if and when that property is annexed into the city, and then we'll establish the terms at that time. I want to point out there is one more assessment roll that will come onto this project, and that is the overlay for their south on 270th that we're doing with the township, if you recall. That hasn't been completed. That'll be completed next year, so we'll have to have another assessment hearing specifically for that next year. That's it. Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment on this project? Is there anybody in that area that'd like to come up and make a comment this time? Appears that there isn't, so I'm going to go ahead and call on you, Madeline, for recommendations here.
Yes, Public Works moves to approve the adoption of the assessment for street stormwater, sanitary sewer, and water main improvement project for Lake Forest 8th Edition and 270th Avenue.
Second.
There's a second. Is there any questions? Any comments?
My name is Gary Costa. I live here in Detroit Lakes on Madison. But I've been looking at your figures and I have a question. The total assessment amount, that's split over how many years?
In this case, it's a 15-year term, but that's following a five-year deferral. The developers have two options. They can either take a term of a 20-year term starting now for 20 years, or they can take a deferment for five years and then a 15-year term.
So the amount is divided by 15 years?
Plus interest.
Plus interest.
Correct.
Okay, and that was the same with the first one?
Yes.
Okay, that's the same for all of them, right?
Correct. The thing that changes is on reconstruction projects, we always do a 20-year term, and the interest rate is variable. It depends on what the city's able to secure their financing at, plus some for the issuance costs.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, Madeline?
We have a motion.
We have, in a second. And any comments here as far as from the council that all in on that particular item? So this is a consideration to a resolution approving the adoption assessment role for street stormwater, sanitary sewer, and water main improvement project for Lake Forest 8th Edition and 270th Avenue. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Before I go any further on public hearings, I see that we've got a couple gentlemen that I have forgotten to call on, and so I'm going to take these and then we'll get back to our public hearings. The first one is going to be Item 5C. We've got David Nohner. This is consideration for the first reading of ordinance number 422, zoning property at 600 Homestead Street from an R1, single-family to R2, one and two-family district. He's representing his dad, Don Nohner. And Larry, do you want to comment on this?
Well, essentially, the request is to change the zoning of this lot from R1 to R2. The R1 zoning requires a 50-foot rear yard setback, and this lot is only 105 feet deep, whereas in the R2 district, you can have a 30-foot rear yard setback, which makes this property more usable and more buildable. Planning Commission unanimously recommends approval.
Key recommend approval on that. Okay, Dan, would you like to make a recommendation with the motion there?
Yeah, the CDC looked at this last night of the consideration to first, nope, sorry, consideration to the resolution. Nope, that's not it. Where am I?
Item 5C.
Oh, I was just on the right place. I've just been taking up so much time with Mr. Pratt, so just kind of zoned out here. So Item C, yes, it's a consideration of the first reading ordinance 422 zoning property at 600 Homestead Street from R1, single-family to R2, one and two-family district, Dave Nohner. CDC recommends approval and I so move.
Second.
Okay, is the motion a second? Is there any comments? If not, all in favor of the motion going from R1 to R2, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Thanks, David, for coming. Feed your dad for me. Let's go on to Item 5. Dave will call for, Dave Pratt, Dave, sorry to make you, are you, are you going to stay with yours here? Are you, are you going to, I've got you coming up here now, 5D here now, also.
We did the gentleman.
We did, we did, we did for...
Different Dave.
Different Dave.
Did that Dave.
Different one.
Yeah. But I wanted you to wait so you could see your son at work.
Thanks, Ron.
Yes.
Another day.
Okay, but, well, you don't want to say?
Just go ahead.
We've got your item coming up.
We're going to take yours right now.
We're taking yours right now. Yep. Okay, Item 5D is consideration to resolution approving preliminary plat of Sherwood Oaks at 735 Sherwood Drive. Dan, you want to take this in?
Yeah, so the Item D is consideration to resolution approving the preliminary plat of Sherwood Oaks at 735 Sherwood Drive. Planning Commission reviewed this, recommends approving the plat with the six conditions. A few of the items that we're really stressing here is stormwater and water not leaving the site as much as possible and paying park dedication fees. And if you want me to read all six of the conditions, I can, but they're in the packet.
We have them in the packet.
All right. Now I got to get back to the, so I did read that. CDC reviewed this last night, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
There's a second then. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. And let's do E also for Dave Pratt while he's here.
E is consideration of a first reading ordinance 43 zoning property, 735 Sherwood Drive from R8 Agricultural Residential to R2, one and two-family residential. Again, planning commission reviewed this. CDC reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Is there any discussion on this? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Thanks, Dave, for coming tonight. Okay, let's go back to our public hearings. Once again, I'm going to adjourn our regular meeting for a public hearing. This one is for Item C. Public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed assessments for street stormwater, sanitary sewer, and water main improvement projects for Ridgeview First Edition. John?
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. We'll try to go through this one even quicker because it's pretty similar to the Lake Forest one. This is the assessment hearing for the Ridgeview First Edition project that's currently underway. Again, required to do this by state statute 429. We'll go through the improvements, the cost financing, and then have some questions and comment period. A little bit of background, the developer, John Berquist, petitioned the city for the street utility improvements, the first phase of what could be a 94-acre subdivision. The preliminary, or the plat actually contains about 74 lots for the whole thing. The first phase of the project is 12, limited to 12 lots. Existing infrastructure was installed on Long Lake Road back in 2006 and can provide service to most of the western area of the development. Essentially, we're putting in pretty standard sewer, water, streets, et cetera. The only exception in this case is we're running an oversized water main through this area with the idea that that main could be a transmission main to areas in Munson Lake and south of County Road 6 someday, should the city ever grow in that direction. That's about the only exception there. Stormwater, we put in a collection system. We also started a regional treatment basin that'll service a good portion of the ultimate subdivision. So rather than ponds in each one of these phases, we've built out a larger system that could accommodate some of the future stuff. The result of that is us, between the city and the developer, carrying some additional costs up front right now for that. Street, standard 36-foot-wide urban section, estimated costs, looking at total project costs of about $640,000. That does not include $61,800 and some change for previously deferred assessments from the 2006 Long Lake Annexation Project. Projects funded by city and special assessments, in accordance with our policy. Same dance here, sewer and water main, 100% of the cost. City pays for the oversizing and looping, so we do have some oversizing costs with that water main. Service laterals are 100% assessed. Stormwater split 50/50 between the subdivision and the city. And street, 100% of the costs are assessed. This is how it shakes out. City share in this case was about $111,000. Again, it's those 50% for the current Phase 1 stormwater, future stormwater, and then we have some of that, about $18,000 in water main oversizing. The balance of $528,000 is being assessed. Assessments are distributed to the adjacent properties within the subdivision on a per-lot allocation in this case. This is what it looks like in this particular case. You're looking at total estimated per-lot of $40,000. Again, that does not include the $61,000 previously deferred. The way we did that is we spread that across 12 of the lots within the subdivision. Then there's also another lot that's within the plat but not being improved. That got hit with about a $20,000 special assessment, and that's how we allocated that. And then we also have the future stormwater costs. Those are deferred assessments to future portions of the subdivision. Again, developer paid, prepaid 25% of the assessable cost prior to starting the construction project. The remaining balance plus the deferred assessments are going for a 15-year term following a five-year deferral, starting this, the end of this year, 4% interest rate. Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much, Adam. Okay, Dan, you want to take this one in? Or, excuse me, Madeline?
Again, Public Works moves to approve the adoption of the assessment role for street stormwater, sanitary sewer, and water main improvement project for Ridgeview First Edition.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. We're going to adjourn our meeting again for another public hearing. Item D, public hearing to consider proposed assessments for unpaid streetlight fees, water, sewer, and stormwater charges, and I'll call on Heidi.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Zeeman. This evening, you have in your packet, and I have an updated listing of folks who have some delinquent water, sewer, stormwater, and streetlight utility bills. Annually, we notify these property owners or... Annually, we notify these property owners or customers that they have bills that have not been paid, give them an opportunity to pay those bills, and then if they are not paid, they are assessed to property taxes for the following year. This year, it is, these are being assessed over one year at five percent interest. It's just a way for the city to recoup some of those fees that were not paid. I guess I would stand for any questions.
Any questions for Heidi? If not, Natalie, do you wanna take care of this?
Sure, the finance reviewed this.
Excuse me, we should open the public hearing.
Oh, excuse me, is there anybody here? I didn't see anybody. Was anybody here that would like to come here for that portion? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, then go to Max and Eric Councilor.
So, finance reviewed this, the amount, the amount of four thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents, and we move to approve the consideration to a resolution adopting the assessment role for unpaid streetlights, water, sewer, and stormwater charges.
Is it, motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. We'll adjourn our regular meeting for a public hearing for item E, public hearing to consider proposal assessment for unpaid fire protection charges, and once again, I'll call on Heidi.
Thank you, Mr. Zeeman. This evening, we have two, two folks who have not paid on fire protection bills that were sent out. Again, this is an annual assessment that we, that we do, do if these bills remain unpaid. They'll go on the properties at, for one year at five percent interest, and I would stand for any questions.
Is there anybody here in the public that would like to speak to this? Doesn't look this, so we'll close the public hearing, and we'll go to Natalie once again.
So, finance also reviewed this one in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-nine cents, and moves to approve the consideration to a resolution adopting the assessment role for unpaid fire protection charges for the year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion, the second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. And it looks like we've taken care of all those, and, uh? And so then with that, we're gonna go back to our regular items, and we're going to item five A. Dan, community development.
All right, so item A is consideration to a resolution setting a public hearing for proposed vacation of utility easements in lots one, two, four, and five, Block Two of Tower Road Industrial Park. This is, this was reviewed by the CDC last night and recommends approval, and I so move.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second. Is there any discussion about these lots?
This is just a public hearing to be set to vacate the utility easements up at the Public Works Garage site area for the county and city co-op properties.
Okay, so this is a consideration resolution, say in a public hearing for the proposed vacation of utilities, easement of lots one, two, four, and five of Block Two of Tower Road Industrial Park. No other discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Item B is consideration to a resolution denying the expansion of a non-conforming use in order to construct a fifteen hundred and sixteen-square-foot addition to a one thousand four hundred square-foot storage building at eight seventy-four Sherwood Drive. CDC reviewed this, Planning Commission removed, or reviewed this, recommends approval of denying this. To deny? All right, recommends denying this expansion, and I so move.
Is there a second? There's a second, any discussion?
Larry, you just wanna cover what the issue is here?
Well, the issue here is that the person has a fourteen hundred square-foot storage building.
On a vacant lot, and essentially, that's not a permitted use, so in order to do anything with it, they would need to get a non-conforming use expansion permit. This request would more than double the size of the building. The Planning Commission felt that it was an inappropriate use, and they recommended denial.
Okay, thank you, Larry. So this motion, the second, is looking for consideration to a resolution denying the expansion of a non-conforming use in order to construct a fifteen hundred and sixteen square-foot building to a fourteen hundred square-foot storage building at eight seventy-four Sherwood Drive by Raceline Development. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. And it looks like then we go over to the Public Works, and I'll call on Madeline.
Okay, item A, Dave has already appeared before us. Item B, Karen Scholes and Ms. Omen, who is the Marshmallow Foundation's Director, appeared before the Public Works Committee to provide us with an animal control report. I'll make it short and sweet over, to date, this year, they've taken care of a hundred and thirty little animals that have been turned over to them. So, I mean, it's, there's lots of dogs and kitties and goats and cows, and they do all kinds of, they take care of all kinds of things, even reptiles and birds. Item C, consideration to the second reading and adoption of ordinance forty-two, amending City Code Section one, one zero zero one A. This is the city beach relative to parking boats overnight on the beach. Public Works had a, quite a discussion about this, but moves to adopt ordinance forty-two with the parking overnight hours between two and six, right?
Five thirty, I think.
Between six on the beach.
Two and five thirty.
Two and five thirty, oh, so close.
Okay, there's a, motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any discussion on this?
I'm curious what the penalty would be if you did leave your boat there.
Well, first of all, it will be complaint-driven. In other words, police won't, aren't gonna be patrolling the beach to provide tickets if they are. It's a complaint-driven, so. I'll call on Kelsey for what might be the appropriate fine.
Yeah, Vice Mayor and Council, and I'll let Charlie or Chief Todd correct me here, but, you know, I think the enforcement provision of the ordinance allows it for it to be a misdemeanor violation, but it also allows us to do administrative fines. I don't know if we've set an administrative fine, two hundred dollars for the beach violation,
Okay, any other questions on that? So this is consideration.
Can I ask another question?
Okay, sure, go ahead.
So when you define it as a misdemeanor, that's punishable by jail time for leaving your boat on the lake?
That's correct.
Correct?
Correct.
And a two hundred dollar fine if you did.
We, first of all, will.
Quit leaving your pontoon on the beach.
I don't have one, but I know people who do, and always fault, so that's pretty steep. Just, I'm sorry, it surprised me that it would be a misdemeanor. I thought it would be a petty misdemeanor payable, but that's.
We typically will try to enforce the administrative penalties provision, which allows people to avoid prosecution altogether, so it's only the ones who are unwilling to accept their fines.
What is the administrative penalty?
That's the two hundred dollars.
That's the two hundred dollar fine prior to any criminal charges?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions? So there's a motion and a second, and for consideration to a second reading adopting ordinance number forty-two, amending the City Code Section one zero zero one A, city beach relative to parking boats overnight in the beach. All in favor of the motion, the, oh, excuse.
Can I ask one, I'm sorry? So is this typical to a parking, to a parking situation, Charlie, or not? I mean, is it, is it a misdemeanor if I park in the wrong spot in some other area with my vehicle and not?
We do have some parking penalties. They're differently amounted, they're not typically two hundred dollars, so this would be more than your average parking. True, and parking violations are typically not misdemeanors.
I guess I'm a little taken aback, a little bit, because I don't think we talked about it being a misdemeanor or that there would be a two hundred dollar fine.
Or maybe that I, maybe that I didn't understand it, that could have been true also, but yeah, I don't recall it.
I don't recall that.
Those are good questions, I think.
We haven't discussed that part of this.
Those are good questions.
Frankly.
Just remember, the beach ordinance has a lot of other provisions in there.
Oh, because it goes on with the beach ordinance.
So, everything that's in that beach ordinance is enforceable as a misdemeanor.
Oh, okay.
And fee schedule, so, I mean, we'll be adopting the fee schedule in December, so if you wanna change the fine, you can change the fine. That's council discretion.
And we did talk to you about that one rental place that comes down, leaves their pontoons on a, on a flatbed to rent all the time, too, that would include that, too, on it.
We could defer it to discuss it further, if you would like. I mean, I certainly, is there a problem with deferring it? Let's just say that.
Well, the entire beach ordinance is a misdemeanor.
Yeah, so, see.
You'd have to change all of it.
I think you have to change the whole beach ordinance, but we could, we could change the fine.
Yeah, like the parking fine is twenty-five dollars, so you can change.
Nobody's gonna be parking their pontoon on the beach before we address the fines issue.
But passing this takes it the next step, correct? I mean, once this is passed, you don't go back, and then we figure out the fine after?
Correct, because this is a second reading, but, you know.
But we, we do have control over the fine, though.
That's correct, yeah.
And that's coming, you said, November, were we looking at that?
December, we always adopt our fee schedule.
This particular section of, or this particular change, remember, there was already an existing prohibition with regard to, you know, utilization of the beach, and this is all of the various restrictions that we have in utilization of the beach, again, the city beach, so from Legion to the Pavilion. And every one of those restrictions and provisions, violation of any one of those things is, has been a misdemeanor for twenty or thirty years, right? We typically enforce it through, though, through the administrative penalties ordinances, where you would set an administrative penalty, like Kelsey says at the December meeting. The reason it's a misdemeanor is, is if we don't get cooperation from the offender, making it a petty misdemeanor is just another, just another monetary penalty that they didn't pay the first time, so they're not gonna pay the second time, and we've got no way to enforce it. So, the city attorney's office would much prefer that you leave it as a misdemeanor.
And deal with.
And I, you know, I don't care what you set the fine at. If you wanna make it a five-dollar fine, that's whatever.
If we do it this way, we leave it as a misdemeanor, but we can adjust the two hundred dollar fine in December.
In December.
A penalty.
So I've got a question now. So, this is all part of the beach area ordinance, and we're, so, we're finding people, we've got the ability to find people, two hundred dollars in administrative penalty to have a bottle of beer or walk their dog out there, or any of those violations that we set two years ago, or a year and a half ago, and then who is enforcing the administrative policy? Because I, if you've got a pontoon there, we can see that a little bit easier, but are we gonna have the police department go down there and administer administrative fines versus a misdemeanor for walking their dog on the park, or, on the beach?
Yes. Well, okay. This is like we're redoing this whole ordinance, okay? This is just one particular tweak to the, to the, to the beach ordinance, okay? And you're setting a restriction on parking your pontoon there overnight. There are a variety of other restrictions in the beach ordinance. I mean, how many boats you can have at a dock, how many docks you can have, how many, there's, there's a, I don't wanna go through the whole term of the ordinance. The way that the administrative penalties works is that, yes, the, the law enforcement officers can issue the administrative penalty. You guys set whatever the, the fine amount is to be, right? And typically, people will pay their fines, okay? If they don't pay their fines, then the city has the option, not the requirement, but the option, to then refer it for prosecution to the city prosecutor's office, okay? That doesn't always occur. It only occurs if they don't pay their administrative penalty. But it is a way of making them pay their administrative penalty, and typically, what happens in that situation is that once there has been, once it's been turned over to the prosecutor's office and they get the nice letter from the prosecutor, they typically do pay their fine. And then the misdemeanor charge is usually dismissed upon payment of the fine.
Okay, let's, let's call a motion that, all in favor of the consideration to the second reading and adoption of ordinance number forty-two, amending the City Code Section one zero zero one A, city beach relative to parking boats overnight on the beach. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. Nay? I don't hold the right word.
Okay, we have one opposed there. So that, that motion carries.
And when we do the fee schedule, think about, you know, we, we set that amount?
So, Madeline, let's go on to the next item then.
Okay. Item D is consideration to a memo from the Public Works Director approving grinding the brush pile at the Compost Site. The Public Works Committee reviewed the bids and moved to accept a low bid of sixteen thousand and odd, some odd dollars to grind the brush pile at the Compost Site, and it appears today that the county may be sharing that cost, so we move to approve that. Second.
There's a motion, the second, and I also, Sean, if you would say any comment on that, but this is part of our budget, correct? It's in our budget, this, this sixteen thousand on that, but.
It was not a budget, I had it, okay.
It was not a budget, I had it, okay. Anything you wanna say else about this, 'cause we had two bids, and this is by far the lowest bid that we had, correct then? So we've got a motion and a second, all in favor for consideration of the memo for the Public Works Director to approve grinding the brush pile at the Compost Site. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. And then, John, do you wanna give us a city engineering report there, please?
Probably the better question is, do you want me to give the city engineer report?
Maybe if you could just give us a recap of what you've got going on right now.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can do that. Vice Mayor and Council, you know, I'm gonna kinda glaze over a lot of this, but Westlake Drive, we're gonna have a closed session and talk a little bit more about that. We continue to work towards reaching an agreement and moving that project ahead, but again, we'll go into closed session and talk more about that. Westlake Drive, six to the Pelican River, I think we've talked about that enough tonight. The Berquist or the Ridgeview subdivision, that is underway, sewer and water are complete. Contractor will be working on storm sewer here yet this week, and then moving towards street construction in the, in the coming week or two. The Bristol subdivision, there was some movement on that. I did receive a copy of the plans and specs that were prepared by the developer. Those are on my desk for review, so we're reviewing and commenting and making sure that everything is sort of in order on that. I haven't heard if they intend to try to start anything this fall. I sort of suspect that probably too late to start anything this year, but the project is moving ahead. Willow Homes for AZ, that's our large reconstruction project. The sewer-water street are done between Cheryl and West Avenue, and right now, they've got, got it graded, got some Class Five down, and last I heard, the concrete contractor will be coming in, barring weather, tomorrow to start curb and gutter. They're still finishing up some underground between West and Rossman and getting the bore underneath the track and some of that, some pretty tedious work, but on schedule, still looking at probably wrapping up and being paved and substantially complete on that area within, within the month. Lake Forest Seventh Edition, again, we talked about that tonight. That is basically wrapped up, other than Ware Course and the overlay on two hundred and seventieth, and that'll occur next spring. Highland Drive, we've had some discussion, both with some city officials and staff and county staff, and the township supervisor got together and started discussing what that might look like in the way of cost participation, who's gonna lead the project, et cetera, and where that's going is, there's gonna be a joint meeting between this council and the township board at the special meeting next week to hash that out just a bit further. Still looking at trying to get that underway next year, and Willow Springs is deferred for a year. Okay, questions?
Any other questions for John? Thank you very much. And Madeline, you have also two other items?
We have two other items. One is an application for street closure for the Holy Rosary School Marathon. This is an, this is an annual event, usually that takes them around town and out and around the lake. Public Works moves to allow for this street closure for. Public Works moves to allow for this street closure for Holy Rosary.
There's a motion, there's a second.
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion?
Just for clarification, what, what are they looking to close? All the way around the lake, or what portion?
It says here, south on Washington Avenue, left on North Shore, drive by the park, right onto the North Shore, drive by the high school, around Big Detroit Lake, around Little Detroit Lake, back along Westlake Drive, north on Lake Avenue, back to Holy Rosary School.
It's going to be on October seventeenth from one to four o'clock.
Exactly, so everybody out and about, watch for, for their bike, walk, or run near the park.
So, okay, Dan?
They usually don't close the street.
No.
They've actually closed the street.
They don't actually close the street.
So it's more of an event, a permission, not closing.
They just have to fill out the application for it.
Right, right. I just want to make sure that we've got the.
It's what they've always have done.
We're not closing all those streets.
We're doing what we've always done to help them for the marathon, yes. Okay, if no other questions, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. The next item, please, Madeline.
The next item was an application for a food truck license in town. That didn't make it into the agenda. This is for food truck for Brad Shirvine, DL Dinner and Lunch Food Vendor. Public Works approves this. He has his, his fees in and all is well.
Okay, this is a motion, the second, and this is for a food truck vendor license at, at, at end of North Washington and Highway thirty-four. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And at this time, we're going to take a ten-minute recess. We'll go into the finance, and the first item is seven A, and we had discussion and updates regarding the American Rescue Plan Act, and I'm going to call on Heidi to give us an update on that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Zeman. At the Finance Committee, we discussed the American Rescue Plan Act funding, and I just gave a brief update, which I'll do now. Basically, not a lot has changed. There's still no final guidance from Department of Treasury on how these funds can be used. However, there is internal, there is interim final guidance, which has been issued and which some folks are relying on in order to begin spending their funds. We've come up with a few ideas of how we might want to potentially spend these funds, run them by some of our financial consultants, our auditors. And at this point, we haven't made any decisions on anything. There'll be more to come on that, and many more discussions with the Finance Committee regarding use of these funds. Fortunately, we have plenty of time to spend them. The, the funds need to be encumbered by the end of 2024 and need to be actually spent by the end of 2026. So there's no real rush in, in trying to determine how we're going to spend these. We can wait for some additional guidance if we'd like to. The only other update is that non-entitlement units, which the city is considered because we're under fifty, fifty thousand population. The first reporting deadline was to be October thirty-first of 2021, so in a couple of weeks. However, that has now been moved by the Department of Treasury to the end of April 2022. So no reporting is due for us until the end of April, and I think that's for Treasury to get a few quirks worked out of their reporting system that they potentially had with some of their entitlement units when they were required to report at the end of August. That is all I have for an update, but I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions for Heidi? Thank you very much for that update. We'll move on to seven E. Heidi, if you can, just tell us how we're doing with our different funds and so forth over the summer months to see if our summer seasons are coming back the way we were used to having them.
Sure, absolutely. I did provide the Finance Committee, and I also emailed out earlier to the entire council, some updated food and beverage and local option sales tax reports that include final July 2021 figures. The good news here for food and beverage tax, the July 2021 collections were more than any other year. So very good news to see the food and beverage industry seeming to bounce back a bit from the pandemic. Local option sales tax also has remained strong. Again, we're projecting paying off the police department bonds, which were issued only last year in May of 2023. That's versus our original payoff date, which was February of 2028. So that's four years and nine months early, and which yields an extra savings of over $163,800 in interest payments that we would have had to make on, on the, on those bonds. So very good news there. The liquor store, obviously, a little difficult to compete with 2020 and the nutty year that was last year, but still extremely busy and strong over there. September was nearly 131,000 over their 2019 sales. So still extremely, extremely strong sales at the, at the liquor store. And then, just on a side note, the liquor fund does transfer a large chunk of their profits to offset property tax levy, about $540,000, so just something to keep in mind. The other item that I thought I'd give you an update on, that we don't necessarily always update on, is lodging tax. Good news here, too. It does appear that the lodging industry has bounced back some as well. And June, July, and August, we received lodging tax receipts, more lodging tax receipts than we've ever received since, since those have been put in place. So overall, the, the summer was quite good to our, our lodging establishments, which is, which is good to hear, especially after last year. And then, looking at January through August 2021 versus 2019, we're actually over where we were at in 2019 by about $4,200 in lodging tax collections. So again, bouncing back, and that is all good news for our businesses. I'd be happy to answer any questions, otherwise that's all I have.
Any questions for Heidi? If not, it looks like the businesses in the Trail Lakes area are doing well, and that we've got our resort season back in strong with June, July, and August, and it also goes into September, too. So hopefully, that trend will continue all the way through winter for us. Thank you for that update.
We need a motion. We need to get off the consent.
Okay, we need, need a motion to go ahead and accept that report.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Lori. Let's go on to the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Ron. Item A is consideration to approving the Republic Civil Service rules and regulations. The proposed change here is to make a change from allowing summer help, summer-only temporary help to allowing part-time, uh, police officers any time of the year. The rules are in the agenda packet. Public Safety Committee recommended approval and I saw move.
Second.
There's a motion, is there a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
So item B will also require approval. We did get our new ladder truck. The chief reported that it is wonderful, exceeds expectations. So now we need to get rid of the old ladder truck, but we need approval from the council to sell that. Public Safety Committee moves to approve selling the old ladder truck and I saw move.
There's a motion, we got a second, then. Is there any discussion in regards to that?
Is there any interest from Becker County Museum? Looking for.
Not that truck.
Not that truck? Okay, sorry.
No, but maybe the water car will make the parade longer. We have the most fire trucks anybody in the area.
Is there much of any value, because it is in its broken state?
Chief Swanson, how much do you think we could probably get?
We don't want to probably skew that in a public session.
But anyway, it does have value.
One million dollars.
It just has value, and you, and we certainly don't want to give it away.
The ladder, the ladder part doesn't work, but there are other features on it that, you know, the truck does run. It, its pump has been rebuilt, so somebody could use it to some extent, or maybe you could get by if you only use, you know, needed it once every few years. You, you just had to have a ladder, a truck in reserve, and you wanted to baby that ladder one time, very seldom. But, so there is some value. You could probably part it out if nothing else, but.
Keep it as a grass rig?
Maybe. So what we, yeah. We don't need a grass rig that big.
Put it in the yard for display.
So, but, but we will have to do full disclosure of what's wrong with the ladder part of it. You know, and make sure whoever gets it knows what, what its liabilities are, so.
Yeah, we have to tell you. So do we, so we've got a motion, a second, to put it up for sales. Take a vote, all in favor of going ahead with that, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Let's move on to the Liquor Gambling Committee. Matt Bokey.
Item nine A was discussion on a special on-sale liquor license. This has been deferred as we're looking for more information and possibly a presentation next month, so no action there. There is another agenda item. Item nine B was the donation to the Ice Palace. Kelsey, you want to tee that one up?
Sure. Vice Mayor and Council, last month, the Liquor and Gambling Committee meeting, we talked a little bit about where the budget sits for our 150th event. We kind of wanted to get through the Heritage Festival and see where we ended up after that event. Basically, the last kind of scheduled event that we have is the Ice Palace and Polar Fest. So there was a request from the Ice Palace to contribute towards the, the lighting of the trees in the park. That was discussed a little bit last month. We also typically give something to Polar Fest for fireworks, so we anticipate there'll be a request for that next year. So basically, the discussion at the Liquor and Gambling Committee was around how much to sponsor, basically, or contribute to the Ice Palace and the lighting in the park.
After discussion at the Liquor Gambling, we decided on an amount of $6,750 for kind of a one-time gift. I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion for $6,750 to be used for this expense. There's a second?
Yep.
Okay, the second. And I might add, too, that this Polar Fest is going to be quite a deal this year with the, with the Ice Palace. It's going to be their final event for the 150th celebration. In the past, the Ice Palace has been made up of a thousand blocks of ice, and their goal right now that they're planning is to have 2,000 blocks of ice. So it's, it's not going to be just a little, little Ice Palace. It's going to be huge. So anyway, we've got a motion, a second, and all in favor of spending $6,750, Liquor Fund, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And then, going on here, we also want to call on Natalie to do item eleven A, please.
Well, this falls under Finance, but Kelsey can speak on this better than I can.
You want me to speak to it? Vice Mayor and Council, the Airport Commission has already approved this. The airport received a grant to pay 70% of the design costs related to the site prep for the new hangar. So basically, this resolution would just authorize the execution of that grant.
So with that, Finance moves to the consideration to a resolution authorizing the execution of the MINDOT grant agreement for the hangar site prep design.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We're going to skip eleven B for right now, but we're going to go to item C, consideration to approve the following licenses, and can I do all these?
Those aren't consented.
Well, it's under consent, so we've got that squared away then, so we're good there. Under the mayor's agenda, he'd like to recommend the name of Reverend Ernie Man C. to replace the board member Kerry Johnson, who served her term on the HRA board. Is there a motion except for Reverend Ernie Man C. to be on the HRA board?
So moved.
Is there a second? There's a second? Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? That, that motion carries. And then, going on down here, I want to mention that on, on our next council meetings on December fourteenth, 2021, in our December meeting, we have the truth, the tax levy pursuant to through taxation required at 6:01 PM. And then also to remind everybody that we have a special council meeting that will be held on Wednesday, October twentieth, at 1:00 PM, and we need everybody here to please be here for that meeting. That's next Wednesday, October twentieth, at 1:00 PM. And also, just a reminder that the Coalition of Minnesota Fall Conference is taking place in Womer on November eighteenth and nineteenth. We do have a block of rooms. So if you're interested, please see Glory, so we can get your name in there for those reservations. And with that, before we adjourn, staff, do you have anything you'd like to bring up at this time before we do the item eleven B?
No, I do not have anything else.
Okay, does anybody else on the council have anything else they would like to bring up this time before we do item eleven B? At this time, we're going to close our regular meeting. We have a closed meeting for consideration of the monetary contribution by the city that purchased the right-of-way for the Westlake Drive project. This meeting may be closed pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D, point zero five subdivision three C. So at this time, we'll adjourn our, our meeting for a closed meeting.